It is 7:17 and we do have a need for extension of another 10 minutes to return at 7:27. It is 7:27 and we do have a need to extend for another five minutes to return at 7:32. All right, it's seven thirty-three and we are back in session. With that, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda. Item number five, verbal reports from council members. Are there any reports from any council members, any meetings or events you may have attended that you wish to share? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number six, items for discussion. Six A, discussion of amending the Pasco Municipal Code Title Twenty-Five related to residential design standards and Director Gonzalez.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. As presented to council back in July, the department is working on a fairly substantial update to Title Twenty-Five of the Pasco Municipal Code related to zoning. Work on this effort began in late December of two thousand and twenty-one. It was initiated with the help of members from the Home Builders Association of the Tri-Cities. And was initiated also to help supplement the upcoming and soon-to-be-complete Housing Action Implementation Plan. Before getting into the details of the proposal, I wanted to provide a little bit of context setting for reference with regards to why the changes are being proposed. In addition to meeting sort of the local demand for increased housing, we did complete as part of our housing plan, the housing needs assessment element. And what that analysis has indicated is that Pasco need over twenty-three thousand new homes by the year twenty forty-five to accommodate a forecasted population of over a hundred and twenty-five thousand residents. That's a little bit more than forty thousand residents than we currently, that currently call Pasco home today, about eighty-one thousand or so residents right now in the city of Pasco. That requires twenty-three thousand new housing units. And of that, approximately seventeen hundred units have been identified as what we're undersupplied on. So, we worked with a housing economist to determine what the undersupply of housing units was today in Pasco. And that number is just over seventeen hundred homes that we are short. What's also interesting is that as part of the requirements associated with the Housing Action Plan, which we received a grant from the Washington State Department of Commerce, is that we are also required to estimate or forecast not only the number of units, but the number of units based on income levels for households. And so of those twenty-three thousand new units, almost forty percent of those new units are needed for households making a hundred percent or more of our area median income, which is, I think, fairly substantial, meaning that almost half of our new units are needed for folks making the area median income or more. So, with that context setting, I wanted to get into a little bit about the objectives associated with Phase One, the design standards update. And they are considered essential or critical because back in late two thousand and twenty-one, we also completed a housing need survey with our local stakeholders. And the elements that are identified in this presentation and the staff report this evening were identified as barriers to new housing in the city. So, the intent is to provide and offer a variety of housing choices for current residents and those that will call Pasco home in the future. Promote a variety in site and building design and increasing design standard simplicity. And that third one is a critical element of what we're working on right now. So, in general, a lot of these standards, the proposed recommendations, reference elements such as lot frontage. So, the amount of frontage, the width of a lot itself as it fronts a public street. Setbacks, these are your front setbacks, your rear setbacks, the side setbacks. Building orientation, how the home itself or the homes are situated on a particular lot, given the neighborhood context. Parking and driveways and site access and circulation. So, these figures are intended to sort of illustrate kind of where these changes actually impact new development or redevelopment in the city. So, the first one is with regards to minimum lot size. So, the minimum size that a lot is required to be based on the underlying zoning district. And currently, we really only have kind of a one-size-fits-all approach based on the zoning district. So, in the R-one district, the, there are no changes proposed for the detached single-family units, but there have been proposed recommendations to reduce the lot sizes for single-family detached, such as townhomes, row homes, et cetera. Everything in green on all of these slides and on this one indicate changes to the zoning code. We do not and are not proposing changes to the RS-twenty and RS-twelve zoning code elements of the zoning districts. And then you can see how that kind of extrapolates to the R-two, R-three, and R-four zoning districts. Again, the intent also associated with this effort was to enhance and make practical the changes that were adopted in January of two thousand and twenty-two, associated with allowing multiple forms of housing on more residential lots. So, one way of making those a little bit more practical and achievable was, is actually taking a look at the lot size themselves to help encourage or provide more flexibility for developers, property owners, and builders to provide more housing options in the city. This is with minimum site frontage and with a lot of zoning codes separate these two. We, again, want to simplify zoning codes, so we're going to consider these the same. So, the minimum site frontage and the width of the lot itself. And as you can see, a significant amount of changes are being proposed primarily on the R-three and R-four for single-family detached, all the way to cottage housing, which are smaller units on one lot. But certainly, changes are being proposed in the R-one and R-two district to help allow for more townhome and duplex, triplex options as well. With the multiplex or apartments, staff is proposing to remove the minimum lots, the minimum frontage and width, primarily because those developments would be determined based on the comprehensive plan density. So, the thresholds that we specify based on the umbrella lanyards, along with the site design and parking requirements, setback requirements, height, all of those things are still in effect and chip away at what is feasible and what is not feasible in terms of development. So, that's why we decided to remove that restriction on apartments, since they're already dealing with the significant height restrictions. This is the proposal for setbacks. This is one that we actually heard quite a bit from back in two thousand and twenty-one and is still due from a lot of our builders regarding our setback requirements. Today, the rear setback is required is equal to dwelling height. So, if you have a thirty-foot building or a thirty-foot home, which includes a number of single-family detached units in the city of Pasco, you are required to have a thirty-foot rear setback. So, when you add a thirty-foot rear setback on top of five to ten to fifteen feet on each side, along with space for a driveway and a front setback, et cetera, you end up shrinking the actual footprint of the home itself, meaning that it's only possible to go higher, but you're also dealing with height limits as well. So, we believe that reducing this down to fifteen feet, which is, I think, the same as they provide or allow for in the city of Kettowick, will certainly alleviate that concern for a lot of our developers. And this table covers height and lot coverage. We are only proposing one height change, and that is to specify a twenty-foot, a twenty-five-foot height limit for cottage housing. We don't have any cottage housing in the city of Pasco. I'm not sure if there's any actually in our region, but typically what a cottage housing development is, is two to four to eight units, single-family detached homes on one lot. They're typically smaller in size, smaller in footprint. Best practices tend to indicate that a twenty-five-foot height limit preserves some of the integrity of the intent of the development itself. We are proposing changes to lot coverages for single-family detached in the R-one and R-two zoning district. Those have been changes that have been heavily recommended by a lot of our builders because they allow for the home itself to be a little bit bigger. Right now, they range from forty to fifty percent lot coverage. And then the last element, or one of the last elements for tonight's discussion is the consideration of parking and accessibility. Staff is proposing to decrease the minimum parking requirements for studio and one-bedroom apartments from two down to one. Studio and one-bedroom apartments are one of those housing types that are undersupplied right now in the city of Pasco and with a requirement of two per unit. That certainly makes those developments a little bit more difficult to provide for smaller housing types based on where somebody may be in their housing experience cycle. We are also trying to change and make flexible the parking location for multifamily units. So, currently today, there is a requirement in the municipal code that does not allow for parking to be in between the public right-of-way, so the street and the unit themselves for multifamily units, apartments. Ideally, this is something that is seen as kind of a best practice in denser areas of a community so that you have the unit closer up to the street, kind of the eyes on the street, is sort of the intent there. But it also makes it difficult for garden-style apartments, which we are seeing a lot of proposals for. So, we are proposing to allow a little bit more of that parking to be located in between the public right-of-way and the unit, so long as it does not exceed a significant amount of the overall parking or a significant amount of the length of the frontage itself. So, the idea is to allow some parking in between, but not allow the entire frontage to be covered with parking. And then some requirements for screening when you do have parking associated, located in the front. And then the last, and I apologize, I think this is attached to the staff report, but I apologize for the small print here, is the consideration of access and circulation for pedestrians. So, we already have some of this language lightly covered in the municipal code, certainly addressed in our comprehensive plan. But one of the things that we would like to do as the city becomes a little bit more denser is also make sure that there's adequate consideration for pedestrian access within and outside of the site as well. So, this, these provisions actually have been sort of refined over the last year or so to allow for more creativity in the development. So, we would propose that access points to the site shall be provided at approximately a range of three hundred and thirty to six hundred and sixty feet. This all depends on the layout of the site, along existing and proposed perimeters, sidewalks and walkways, and auto arrivals at the site. So, this is just ensuring that there's a way for a pedestrian, a tenant or a resident and owner to get into the site itself versus only having very limited options. And that there's also an emphasis on increasing these access points when you're located within close proximity to a public transportation route, or you're next to a park, or you're next to a school. Some of the things that we actually want to have a little bit more access to and certainly conformance with ADA Design Development Standards as well. So, this really is kind of a high-level overview of what you will eventually see, probably within the next month, in a fairly thick draft ordinance that's being reviewed by our legal team. We've also received a few more proposals to refine some of the measurements and the numbers that we proposed today from some of our housing stakeholders, three in particular. Staff will be in front of the Home Builders Association early next month to present this information again. This is something that a lot of stakeholders have had their input and eyes on because of our Housing Action Plan, which is run kind of concurrently with this. But that'll give us one last opportunity to make sure that what we're proposing and what ends up potentially as adopted as our new code has kind of gone through the gauntlet of being refined, reviewed, and certainly a lot of input from the folks that are impacted by this can have their support on a pretty significant proposal and change to our zoning code. So, that concludes this presentation for me this evening and happy to answer any questions from council. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. Do we have any questions, comments? Councilman Serrano?
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, for reaching out to the community. Have you polled some to see kind of what the actual needs are as far as, hey, you know, we're getting requests for X, Y, Z type buildings or?
Yeah, in fact, you know, one of the things that we're going to start to see a lot more are townhomes, in particular in the city of Pasco. I think we have about eighty-eight right now, and they're all located in one neighborhood. Some, we're seeing a drastic increase in the need for more townhomes because they offer an opportunity for homeownership at a different scale. But some of our code language today restricts what kind of townhome products you can actually put on the, you know, actually build. And so this will help alleviate that concern. But anything in terms of the elements that we shared with council this evening, the setbacks, particularly the rear setback, is a barrier. The lot coverage for single-family detached units has been a barrier. We actually have applicants and permits that are on pause, hoping that there will be some movement on this. And so we're moving as fast as we can. And I think in the near future, staff will likely come back with some considerations regarding height. Parking has been one that has been identified as a barrier for some of our multifamily, particularly studio and one-bedroom apartments. So, that is why staff, along with our consultant team, have proposed to reduce that requirement. And if somebody wants, a developer would like to take advantage of that reduction, they certainly can. But if they would like to provide more, they certainly can do that today as well.
I appreciate that. And I guess my encouragement to both you and to the regulated community is that, you know, if there are specific issues that you don't, aren't, believe, aren't being addressed, don't hesitate to reach out to us, you know, I'm happy to hear from that input. And I'll just express both gratitude and somewhat concern, you know, the three hundred and sixty to six hundred and sixty feet. I appreciate that it's too, you know, that kind of optional. I think, you know, expressly stating shall be three hundred and thirty feet might be a little bit overly burdensome. You know, a little bit more extra pavement, a little bit more, you know, you know, just loss of opportunity to build. So, I appreciate the two, and I guess I want to just suggest that you be mindful of how we implement that, especially when it's got shall and then followed with an option. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor Pratim Alani? Thank you for your comments, um Mayor Pata Maloney.
Thank you, um Mayor Barahassan, thank you, um Director Gonzalez. Um I'm gonna start with echoing uh Councilmember Serrano's concern about the language on the three, three thirty to six hundred and sixty feet. I I don't find that language to be a very appealing way to try putting something, codifying something within our city code. Um either it needs to be at least every six hundred and sixty feet, or we recommend or the, uh we I don't even like like recommend, to be perfectly frank. For, I mean, basically when I think about what what's enforceable, the word three thirty doesn't matter if what it is, it has to be at least every six sixty. Um and so from a from a um a a codified perspective, I would recommend we have a at least this many and put the number down. Um and I I and if six sixty is the right number, then that's great, but let's, right now, that that's all that this would require anyways. Um though I do note that all arrival points to the site, I think is a is an excellent way of looking at it as well, because that would be at a pathway. Uh along natural routes where people would be traveling, if you're gonna be going around this sort of the street on the sidewalk instead of going around a block. Um and coming back, you're able, the ca- a kid would be able to just cut right through on their way home from school, so I appreciate the and language there. Um to 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 create a a natural um connection point there. Um what, one area and and maybe um Director Gonzalez, I just missed this, but could could you touch on height a little more? We've had conversations about building height in the past, and I know that our code allows by special permit uh for exceptions to any zones um. Almost any zones um building height, um however, when we're talking about the level of density that we may need. Um it's still consists, looks to me to be very restrictive, I mean, we're talking about forty-five feet um height uh for multi, for like um apartments. That's three stories approximately, something like that, and so when we're talking about this and we're talking about the level of density we may need to see, and we. We're we're expected to see in terms of growth, um especially on major arterial arterials areas where you'd expect large apartment complexes to be. This still looks like it require or or is limited to sprawl unless we make them go through an additional process beyond the permitting to go through an additional special permit process. So why are we choosing to to restrict building height so significantly? I I guess I do, I don't, I I don't understand, especially for our our four zone and apartments.
Yeah, I I think that that's why we we titled this one sort of a phase one, uh we wanted to make sure that we got some of the critical ones that. Uh we received feedback on a- addressed and and sort of on their way. Um but I think with regards to height, um in in terms of how we wanna plan development or redevelopment in the future. Um I think staff would like to have a little bit more of a a special focus on looking at more than just arterial network, but looking at um. Uh some of nodes, our our nodes, our community focal points in in Pasco, um areas where there's um a little bit more civic uses. Public parks, public transportation, um uh things that generally more folks would want to have access to, and then applying a similar threshold as we do. For uh more flexibility in the amount of units allowed, also using that same criteria for increased height. So that way we don't only see height along arterials, but we see it located. Um distributed more evenly around areas and amenities that the city offers.
No, I I appreciate that, the concept of around um, you know, community gathering places of various sorts, um say, look looking at the Broadmoor area. If uh there's a, you know, a water park, a school, um other things that are right next to each other, whether it's on a major arterial arterial or not. Having an apartment complex there makes um relatively high density housing makes a ton of sense. I I I agree and understand all that, but I guess I'm trying to understand, when do we expect to see this, I I've asked about this for two years now, um about the building height. Every time this comes up, I say, building height, why are we so restrictive, and I'm told we're gonna eventually get to that. Um but I thought that that when we're going through a major revision of design standards, it'd be the spot where we get to that, so could you lay out a more firm?
Yeah, I I would, um the the response is that one of the early um recommendations from the Housing Action Plan, which we expect the recommendation from this Thursday. From the Planning Commission hopefully, um is to address our height, so we'll come right back to the Planning Commission and Council with um a phase two associated with height. And a few other elements that probably need to be adjusted as well.
Yeah, I I appreciate that, um again, just in in connection with what we're seeing in many ways of of this increased need of density, but we're. We're changing everything but one of the fundamental attributes of a building. Um I think that was, those, I think those two are my my major questions and concerns, I. I certainly understand and appreciate trying to add um additional flexibility. Um into the uh into all the lots based on, you know, and all the zones based on what type of uh housing units being put in there, especially when we're talking about townhomes and stuff like that. Does not make sense that they have an ex- have double the, double the buffer by, just because you put your houses to share a common wall, that doesn't make a ton of sense, so. Appreciate that, um so one other question I I s- um and I believe I raised raised this, last time we brought this up is when when this was introduced was. Is there an exception, or do we have a process for exceptions for infill lots that can't meet the um frontage requirements?
Not yet, but that is part of the reason why we haven't brought back an ordinance for council is is this is an item that came up in between the planning commission recommendation and. Today, and we are working on identifying some language that can um be a little bit, be applied more flexible for redevelopment. Specifically infill options in areas of Pasco that were plotted um or developed forty, fifty, sixty years ago. So that that's in progress and will be a part of our eventual recommendation to council.
Great, I really appreciate that, um I think that's all I have, thank you.
Do we have any other questions or comments? I do have one question um from the community, um how about more information on accessory dwelling units? I I did not see anything specific on this as far as accessory dwelling units, can you elaborate a little bit?
Certainly, um and we also have a very um. If I may say beautiful ADU users guide that's available in both Spanish and English, which um we've distributed. Um actually, our our inspection service and code staff actually has been pretty um helpful in distributing that information around the community, but certainly. Uh with regards to ADUs, Pasco uh today has one of the more um uh our regulations regarding ADUs are in line with best practices. In fact, um there has been some new state legislation regarding ADU requirements that um all, if not most cities, will have to comply with. We only have to make one minor change, um and we have a couple of years to do that, but um back in January twenty twenty-two, the the city adopted a. ADU code that um substantially increases the opportunity for uh property owners' residents to construct detached. Uh or attached um accessory dwelling units on their property, but if there's any questions regarding ADUs, if you look up city of Pasco accessory dwelling units. That should come up first or second on Google or Bing and uh be able to download the the document there.
Perfect, thank you, thank you, committee members for asking those questions. Are there any other questions or comments from council on this topic?
So one of the questions that I think uh Councilmember Brown uh Mayfield, since he's been going to some of the CAC meetings. Uh which is Community Action Connections, is allowing charities and nonprofits to allow and operate low income housing. Um in residential areas and so currently it's not being allowed in the C two overlay zone. So just wondering about how that might be, um I guess factored into this.
Yeah, I'm I don't, um the the question is with regards to community uh level service, community service facilities level two. Not being permitted or allowed in these downtown Pasco land use overlay district? Yep, I so I think that is also one of the uh recommendations that has come out of the Housing Action Plan is is that um our stakeholders have. Um identified is is that particular um restriction as something that they would like to see staff reevaluate.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
Is Councilmember Brown with us still?
Councilman Brown, are you still connected?
I believe I'm connected.
Do you have any questions or comments, Councilman Brown?
Um not at, not at this time, uh Councilmember Roach, thank you very much, um I'll readdress it, thank you.
Thanks, great, thank you, with no further questions, uh we look to the next few weeks for more information, correct, updates, thank you. Um with that, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, six B discussion for the single room occupancy. SRO Housing Moratorium, and again, Director Gonzalez.
Let up housing tonight, um good evening again, council, um back in February twenty nineteen, uh the city of Pasco uh. Permitted uh or allowed, adopt, I'm sorry, adopted ordinance number uh four four two five, reallowing single room occupancy housing as a housing option. Um in the city, um in March of twenty twenty-two, uh there was a moratorium established via Resolution forty-one fifty-eight. Um and then a few months later, in September of twenty uh two, uh there was the findings that were adopted associated with the moratorium. And some of those findings um wanted um to take a, uh were intended for us to take a look at uh infrastructure impacts of SROs, so. Is there a, are we seeing a dramatic increase um in traffic, um uh is there a a negative impact with regards to. Um a water or sewer um availability, um and then also taking a look at sort of the loss of motel units themselves. Um and how those are being factored into a conversion from a motel to a motel unit to a a and a a and a unit available for for rent. Um along with um the impact on affordability itself, um since a lot of our older motels are are used as places for temporary housing as well. Um in March of twenty twenty-three, there was a continuation of moratorium, uh that moratorium expires in early September, and so uh this is a staff report. Tended to provide a brief summary of where we're at with SROs uh right now in the city of Pasco. Uh we've got a few, I think two slides that kind of il- uh demonstrate some of the photos that we have so far of what the inside of some of these units look look like. So SROs are intended to be much smaller offerings, they range from three hundred to eight hundred square feet, depending on on the, you know, the development type. Um uh some of them have their own kitchen or kitchenettes, um some of them share kitchen facilities, our code is. Is is fairly well thought out where there are um a minimum requirements based on the number of of units proposed. Um here's an example of um the facades of two uh SROs, the one on the left. Um is an SRO um that is currently up and running in the city of Pasco located along Oregon Avenue. Uh this is a picture taken during the construction phase, it certainly does not look like this anymore, um and then on the right, um there is a a photo of. An a single room occupancy conversion uh located um in a neighboring community, the city of Richland, um off George Washington Way, which is a fairly large. Uh conversion of uh motel units into uh SROs. A little bit of background about some of the uh of the, I I guess the tributes for uh these SROs, these are uh four of the SROs currently operating. Um or soon to be uh up and running in this, in their, in our region, uh so we have two in Pasco, uh one is about two thirds complete. That was the image that was shown on the prior uh screen on Oregon Avenue, um about a hundred and four units uh will be ready. Um and the rent uh ranges from a low of nine hundred ninety-five dollars upwards to about eleven hundred dollars based on the square footage. Um we also have a uh another conversion um that is right now on pause, but is set to be rebegin uh here in the very near future. Um with a conversion of approximately a hundred and sixty units located on Eighteenth and Lewis. Um across river in uh Richland, uh we have a fairly large conversion, um about two hundred and four units. It's about a quarter occupied, um and the rents there range from a low of twelve hundred upwards of fifteen hundred based on the floor plan chosen. And then um a recently uh uh opened uh SRO available um in Kennewick. Near, I I believe Columbia Center Boulevard, um about a hundred and thirty units, and they uh have rents uh from about eleven hundred to fourteen hundred. So um thi- this really is sort of a staff presentation meant to provide a high level overview of where we're at right now with SROs. Uh we we've, i- it it's too early to really determine if um um uh there's been any additional nuisances. I know that was um something that was a a topic both during the planning commission evaluations and certainly with council. About the potential of converting uh older units, but um to date, we have not received um any documented or reported information that would indicate so. It's also fairly early um in the SRO um life, I I here in the region for us to make that determination as well. Um because most of these are being converted from motel units, and a lot of them are 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 trying to be aimed at providing options for folks um. Uh with with limited income or with uh 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 different needs, um there has not been an impact, uh we're not seeing. With with regards to parking, so we're not seeing the overabundance of vehicles located um at the Oregon Avenue um uh uh housing um site. Um generally, uh when we've gone out and had uh discussions with some of our stakeholders, including uh Visit Tri-Cities. Uh there's been no indication that the conversion of older motel units into units available for housing or rental housing is being problematic. Um when we've had discussions with uh the Home Builders Association, the Tri-Cities, uh SROs are generally seen as um. Uh a housing option that is necessary, uh and not as a detriment to the overall housing availability um options uh in our community. Um we did receive a significant amount of support from uh both Ben Franklin Transit and the Housing Authority of City of Pasco and Franklin County. About uh the city and the region really offering these as an option for for folks, uh so the Housing Authority certainly has supported this effort. Uh the Housing Action Plan, uh which is nearing completion, um is is fairly supportive of opening up uh. The toolkit for housing options, so in the cycle of everything from uh being unhoused uh with without options for living. Uh or for housing, all the way up to ownership of a single family home or a townhome or an apartment. Um SROs are typically seen as um a best practice to have as an available option um in your toolkit of of housing um in the community, so. Uh the results of our Housing Action Plan certainly would recommend that um SROs be a uh permitted and allowable use. In terms of potential changes to the criteria, um I I think staff right now would like to take a look at the zoning. Where SROs are currently permitted and not permitted, right now, the uh allowed zoning districts for SROs are the C one. C two and C three zoning district, and the first two, uh there there certainly no issue with those. Um with the C three district, typically those are located in more industrial areas, away from public amenities, away from public transportation, it's typically not where you'd like to see. Any form of housing, um so uh C three might be something that we wanna take a look at, and it might be something where we wanna also. Include sort of criteria for being closer to um public amenities uh or grocery stores, as being areas where you typically would wanna see. Uh more housing options like SROs available, um I I I think one of the questions that comes up with regards to SROs. Is what's the difference between a studio apartment and an SRO, especially those SROs that offer your own kitchenette and restroom facilities, and the answer is. Uh likely uh the conversion of older motel units, so if we're looking at ways to sort of refine our SRO regulations. That might be an area as well that we can take a look at, uh which is clarifying conversion of motel units versus the construction or or redevelopment. Of of units themselves, so um again, this moratorium is set to expire on September seventh of this year. Um and starting looking for council feedback on direction um on this item, uh thank you.
Thank you, Director Gonzalez, and we have uh Councilman Campos uh question, comment first?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, uh Director Gonzalez, if this moratorium expires, would that prohibit or any way? Put a damper in your plans to go back and look at the requirements that you were just outlining for us?
Absolutely not.
Okay, great, um then as I've stated before, I will state it again, I'm not interested in continuing this moratorium.
Councilwoman Roach, thank you, Council.
Thank you, Mayor, uh dovetail on that, I'm not either uh in favor of continuing the moratorium, and glad to see that in the staff's report. That there's been a, I guess, an embracing of the. The SRO as a resource and a tool for of diversity of housing in our our community, but. Um one of the questions I did have for you is on zoning for SROs, I know that they're typically conversions from hotels to. An SRO, however, if a developer wanted to build an SRO, could that be done in an R three and an R four? Does that have to happen in a permitting process?
That that would not be permitted uh today.
And why not?
Because today SROs um are only permitted in the C one, C two and C three zoning district, so we would have to amend. The SRO code to allow for um SROs in a, an R three or an R four zoning district.
Understood, so I guess I'm wondering what would be the. The pause on allowing for it to be in an R three or an R four?
I I don't, um. I don't believe there would be from from staff. So staff would be supportive of allowing a little bit more flexibility with regards to allowable zoning or uh zone uh SROs in more zoning areas? Zone districts.
So I guess my feedback for staff would be to include those zones as well.
Thank you, Councilwoman Roach, any other comments, Mayor Pata Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor Barahassan, thank you, uh Director, excuse me, Director Gonzalez, um. So uh uh just a couple of clarifying questions, so originally SROs were a HUD-defined term. Um specifically designed for low income housing, right, there was, it was in essence a rent-controlled type apartment, or heavily subsidized for the. For for folks who are not even making median incomes, as I recall. Um when the Housing Authority was talking about SROs, were you talking about the original HUD ver- definition, or were you talking about the commercial version? I think when we look at those prices, those are, a thousand dollars per unit is a lot, um that is, that is, that is a lot for. For folks in our community.
Yeah, yeah, I think this is where we begin to get a little into the nuances of the, the differences of different housing units and, and housing types available. These days, there seems to be a new housing type available every week. Um, but with regards to the affordability aspect. Um, some of these projects may take advantage of low-income housing tax credits. Um, we're, we're not sure, we, we certainly don't have that requirement. Uh, we don't have a requirement for any housing in the city of Pasco to have a mandated affordability component to it. Um, for those developers or projects that seek uh, grants or uh, grants from the state, local, or national level. Certainly, that is something that they've taken advantage of. We have units in Pasco being constructed today that, that are taking advantage of, of those, those funding options or opportunities. But typically, um, best practice, um, and also the re- the results from our Housing Action Plan have um, determined that mandating affordability, meaning maximizing the amount that a rent could be charged for any housing unit. Would likely deter that from being built in the first place because you are effectively maximizing, putting a roof on what a, a rent unit, a rental unit could be, uh, could be charged. So I don't, I don't know if I specifically answered your question, Councilmember Maloney, but we, we do not offer, today we do not require any unit. Any type to have a mandated affordability component to it, typically is seen as, as against best practice.
Sure, I wasn't suggesting that we move towards rent control practices, and that, and that was not what I was trying to say. Um, I was asking when the Housing Authority weighed in, um, as you indicated they had. Were they talking about the HUD definition of s- single residency occupancy, or are they talking about the practical definition here of privately-owned, commercial? Housing.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have that answer, but we can certainly reach back out to the Housing Authority and get clarity on, on their, um, their thoughts.
Is it, ob- obviously, the thing I'm most concerned about with this, right, is, is when you look at things like the, you know, the poorest in our community. Where does someone go if there's a two-week gap between um, apartments, right? They're moving apartments and they're already uh, very low in the income level. The apartments that are being converted to SROs are all the cheapest um, um, motels and hotels in the community. And something like a third of our entire um, um, short-term rental market um, across the Tri-Cities is being converted. And it's all the lowest income level um, units. So this, this has a disproportionate impact. I was hoping to hear more about that. I mean, that's, that's one of the concerns I've raised beginning again, and I appreciate uh, Director Gonzalez that you, you alluded to that, about so, those, those concerns. Um, I suspect that we're not gonna have those answers, right? Um, because we're not gonna hear from people who are gonna s- um, suffer most from this or are already suffering from this. Um, obviously, the Pasco units right here, those are already, those are not something we're talking about. They're not, uh, the, the moratorium does not apply to them. They're moving forward. Um, and nor is this moratorium um, intended to try to restrict that. So I guess I'm, I'm still concerned, but um, I, we, the ship's mostly sailed at this point in time. And I'm not sure it's continue, worth continuing to um, uh, hold the moratorium and create uncertainty when um, most of the mi- the units have already been converted. Um, so I'm, I'm still not pleased with where we're at. Because I don't think we're protecting the people who are, who, who we say we're helping by allowing these units. Um, I think it's much more complicated than that, and I think we missed those nuances. Uh, but I'm not sure there's a, a whole lot more we can do at this point in time. And um, um, so I'm, I guess I'm begrudgingly willing to let this um, moratorium end. Um, 'cause I'm not sure I'm gonna get more information that's gonna help me make a different decision, so, um, so thank you, I guess that's all I have.
Thank you for your comments. Councilman Serrano.
Thank you. Uh, do we know the age of the Franklin and the Q? That is uh, when they've opened their doors to allow for.
In, in terms of how long they've been operating?
Yeah.
The Q, I think as of late last week, was issued their certificate of occupancy at the city of Kennewick. Um, and I think the Franklin and Richland's been uh, operating probably within the last three to six months.
Do we have any sense as to whether those twenty-four and zero percent are gonna ha- see an increase, a quick uptick?
Uh, for the Q, certainly, I would expect that as it just opened, we'd probably see some folks trying to, you know, uh, renting those units. Um, uh, in, in terms of, of the Franklin or um, ev- or the one that's in Pasco that's currently operating. Um, I would expect those to continue to increase, particularly with just the rapid growth of the region.
Okay, so I guess my take is before we lift the moratorium, I think we need to see what the market bears. Um, as it sits, we're uh, I tried to run the math without a calculator. Maloney would have been much better at doing this. I think we're at like, maybe an eighth, if not, of the entirety of the market share. And, you know, when you look at the location of the Franklin and the Q, assuming what you're suggesting where the Q is located. That's up to more, uh, much more walkable spaces as far as uh, employment. You know, you look at, if the Franklin's the place I'm thinking of, uh, you know, there are a handful ways to get, you know, even closer to onsite for anyone that works at Hanford. Certainly, not that it'd be an easy walk, but the PNNL and some of the uh, other campuses out that way. Uh, if you're suggesting that the Q is up towards Columbia Center, I think you suggested there's a lot there. Um, and I'm just not certain that where we're sitting, uh, I, and I don't know what other applicants might look like in Pasco. Um, but I don't know what the service level as far as walkability to work or other opportunities there are that, that really make it more sensible here. So I think I'd rather see the market bear some fruit before we lift the moratorium. Um, so until, till we see a little bit more, I, I don't know that it makes sense. If we had, you know, four or five hotels or motels suggesting they're ready to convert and they had a waitlist or whatever the case was. I think that'd change um, my sentiments here, but uh, until we see more need or desire. Uh, I'm not sure that it makes sense.
Thank you for your comments. Um, Councilman Brown, do you have any questions or comments?
Uh, no, except for that, I'm, I'm, I'm in, I'm in with, with the group, but we need to move forward on this. Um, Councilman, uh, Serrano, uh, Pete, thank you very much. I think, again, we need to, we need to move forward on this.
Thank you. Councilman Milne.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Even though I, I do agree with Councilman Serrano on this, I'd actually have to go with uh, Councilman, um, Maloney on this, that he had some really good points, and so I'm behind this as well, as far as what he had to say, I echo that as well.
Thank you. Um, I did have some questions, but um, your conversation with Mayor Fortemaloni answered most of them. And the other one, the other question, one question that I do need to revisit, I did not write it down. What is the square footage of the units uh, on Oregon?
Uh, we, we have that information. It's, it's not in the staff report. We can get that to Council in an email here shortly.
Uh, other than that, I don't have any other questions, and uh, I would agree that we need to move forward with this project and lift the moratorium. Are there any other questions or suggestions from council before we move forward? Okay, seeing none, uh, will this be brought back in the next couple of weeks?
So, hm, what I'm hearing, what I think I'm hearing is that uh, there's no interest in moving forward with the moratorium. And so uh, by nature, it would just expire and so on. It's not, uh, any accident, further accident need to be taken. But um, short of anything, um, we can't really take a straw poll, but I think I um, have a pretty good sense of what uh, if anything, needs to be drafted to uh, continue.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that. Um, and with that, um, thank you again, Director Gonzalez. We'll move on to our next item.
Mayor Baras, before we move on, I'd just like to say that the uh, units are two hundred and two square feet. Uh, looks like all of them or most of them, they're all studio apartments, um, and uh, two thou- two hundred and two square feet according to the Allegri's website.
Okay, let me, I'm writing that down right now. Okay, perfect. Okay, uh, okay, so moving on to our next item on the agenda. We are at item number seven, miscellaneous uh, council discussion. Are there any other comments? Um, um, City Manager Lincoln.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. Couple items, uh, Jesse can correct me here. The uh, felines and firefighters. Operation Best Friend, uh, Friday, August eighteenth from ten AM to two PM. I think this is part of the Clear the Shelter effort, uh, that's, that's happening. Um, we're definitely seeing a large influx of cats in particular. So if you or anyone you know is in the, in the area and looking for a, a, a new cat or kitten, uh, please come on down. Um, Friday, August eighteenth. Um, also wanted to mention that the utility billing software changeover has, has begun. Uh, so far, it seems like it's going fairly smoothly. From what we can tell, we're estimating it'll take about, uh, about a week to, to complete. Um, there's, there's been an e- extra effort of, of customer care in the meantime, besides the notifications that went out to the public. Uh, we've got staff that have been in the hallways with iPads, still trying to make sure that we're processing payments, taking cash payments, things like that. So we're trying to do our best as, as some of these complex crossovers happen with software. And so far, it's been going as, as smoothly as we can hope for, and that's what I've got for today. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that. Uh, I will go down the list. Mayor Fortemaloni first.
Man, must have snuck right in, 'cause all those slides were up as soon as I looked up. Uh, just briefly, um, on Saturday, um, Chow uh, Trattoria had another, one of their um, um, uh, dinners in the alley, um, with the, um, was winemaker's dinner. And I was, uh, my wife and I were, um, attended along with about a dozen and a half other people. Um, beautiful. Again, the, it's, it's well shaded, it was, it was quiet. Um, um, of course, um, you know, the restaurant, um, was exceptional. Um, but also, we, my wife and I, you know, we parked down the street. There was no parking right in front, so we parked just a little bit down the street. It was very quiet, um, which was much appreciated. Um, so I, I'd say that, um, you know, I can certainly speak to, to our efforts to, to help make sure that the people who are, who are downtown. That, you know, that are causing some troubles are, are not causing troubles for everyone. Um, that's, that's paying out we- very well, so it was, it was quiet down there and things were looking good. Um, I would also note that we walked past the um, the outdoor seating, um, outside the specialty kitchen. And at Chow, they were, they were, they were taking advantage of the partnership with the city for um, for outdoor, um, street furniture. So we were sitting in some of those chairs. Not the most comfortable of chairs. Um, um, s- I, I, I hope that their longevity um, is better than I, I, I looked at. We'll, we'll cross my fingers for that, but um, we should monitor that closely, both durability and um, and um, how comfortable those chairs really are. So anyways, I just wanted to say that downtown is doing really well. Um, the city's efforts in all sorts of different um, fashions are paying out, paying off. And it's, it's, it's a wonderful spot to be. Can't wait till more people come down and experience it, so. Uh, kudos to staff for all their hard work, um, and, and helping revitalize our downtown.
Thank you for that. Councilman Campos.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just very quickly to, to City Manager Lincoln. When is the fencing going to come back in front of us? And um, are we certain that staff has incorporated the comments that they received from council during our last discussion?
So right now, it looks like the twenty-eighth, we're gonna bring it back for another discussion to make sure that we've captured all of the, the thoughts from council.
Okay, um, and then my second question, and I apologize, apologize Deputy Cook for putting you on the spot. Uh, my recollection serves, the Blake fix goes in effect tomorrow.
Yes, I believe so.
I just, how are we, um, you don't have to reveal any secret secrets, but are we prepared to, to go forward and do everything? Are you guys looking like you're supported? Everything's going good for you guys?
I believe so.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
We have a lot of training to do and some readjusting, but we'll get there.
Thank you. Um, Councilwoman Roach.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I was just writing down my notes so I don't forget, because it could be there one minute and then gone the next. Um, it's been a long day, so just looking for next uh, Monday, I was looking to be excused from council. I will be in the beautiful state of Utah attending a we- wedding, so I will not be with you, be enjoying that. Um, I did wanna give my update, uh, a little bit late for board reports. But Visit Tri-Cities did not meet in July, in the month of July. Um, I just wasn't that quick with my, you know, navigating my iPad. But there is something really cool happening in the Tri-Cities that Visit Tri-Cities new CEO has secured for us. I'm really excited. I hope you all are really excited about it because it's a, it's just a recreation that I enjoy a lot. And that is the horseshoe pitching championship will be taking place in Tri-Cities in twenty twenty-four. So, pretty neat. Um, and then to end on a low note, uh, just wanted to talk to staff about, um, staff and even Councilmember Milne, 'cause I don't know if people in your district are telling you about this, but um, and Campos as well. But I've been getting contacted by people who live along the bike path in Pasco. All of down that motorized vehicles are getting out of control. There were uh, dirt bikes, four-wheelers in the last week that I was, uh, received phone calls and emails about. Um, and residents who are panicked about it, who are watching it, telling me somebody's gonna get killed. Um, so I'm, I'm relaying that, I'm, I'm not saying that, that's what's been told to me, and that's disconcerting. So just looking for, how are we monitoring that bike path? How are we enforcing that? Um, that motorized vehicles are not allowed on those bike paths? And can we physically make it difficult for them to, um, yeah, get onto the bike path?
So we're, we're aware of that taking place. Um, I think one of the problems has been that there's not been a, an ability to actually pursue anybody who's doing that. So looking into alternatives like access is, is something that is a good idea. Um, I think some of those vehicles are small enough that it, it might not matter. So we might have to get a little, little creative with what we can do to try and mitigate that. But that's something we're, we're aware of. Um, we've had staff try and, and wave them down from the, the parks crews that are out there specifically around Chihuahua, we've seen it. Um, there's been a lot, uh, uh, an increase in the sort of mini motorcycles that we're seeing around as well. Um, but a lot of it's come down to our inability to actually pursue them. And uh, Deputy Chief Cook would probably be able to elaborate more on, on what our limitations are there.
What is the actual, let's say they're, you know, somebody with a motorized vehicle is on the bike path. And code enforcement or law enforcement does catch them, what is the consequence there? I mean, is that a fine?
I would have to look that up.
Yeah, I don't know either. Um, but I was curious, because it sounds like there are a number of people who are watching. Um, that happened from their, from their yard or they're walking on the path themselves. And it's making people very uncomfortable.
I, I will look that up and get that to you.
Okay, thank you so much.
It is true that we would not pursue for, that if they left or tried to attempt to get away from us, we would not be allowed to chase them. At this point.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Serrano.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mr. Lincoln, can you kind of reiterate or recap with the utility billing, um, changeover? Will there still be accessible payments that are not on credit card-based, either here or at the kiosks? Or there is a Dropbox, I believe, at the Hapo Track, whatever, one, you wanna call it center?
Yes, yes, and so are you asking if what's happening now or what will happen in the future?
Uh, in the future, as we move towards this electronic payment, there are folks, obviously, who don't have access to those types of debit bank cards.
Have all the same payment options after the conversion as we had prior to that. So cash payments at, in person and at the kiosks, both here in front of City Hall and uh, Franklin PUD and the Hapo Center area, and then also on- online payments that um, will take ba- bill payer payments from banks. So every, almost any payment option that a person would want to use, uh, we accept, so.
Okay, I, I really appreciate that, 'cause that question had uh, come across to me, and I was like, well, I, I don't know, I just quick pay mine, so I've never given it two thoughts.
Yes.
So yeah, so for those who are concerned, there will still be additional opportunities that make non-credit card payments. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Milne.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I will also be gone next week. My daughter, who's joining the US Marines, uh, wants to do something extraordinary. So we're gonna go to Peru and do the Machu Picchu Incatral hike, so I'll be gone.
Machu.
Machu Picchu, yes.
Machu Picchu.
Machu Picchu. And uh, but my other question was, I've had a couple of people come in in my store today. And were complaining about the rock wall on three ninety-five before you go over the Blue Bridge with all the graffiti. And I was telling them, that's, isn't that the Washington State Department of Transportation's issue? I mean, we're not as Pasco, are we supposed to be repainting that? Uh, I know it looks really bad, but uh, can you kind of clarify whose responsibility is to clean that up?
Mister Worley's on the, the line, so he can probably elaborate a little bit.
Director Worley?
We'll, we'll get you any, yeah, it looks like he stepped off. We'll, we'll get you a response. Um, I think oftentimes, even though it's a wash dot, you, uh, a facility, it's still gonna be up to the, the city to try and, and keep it up. So um, likely our crew will have to go out there and, and take care of it, and we've, we've been alerted to it, uh, th- that it exists. And we'll. Um likely, our crew will have to go out there and and take care of it and we've we've been alerted to it uh that that it exists and we'll. We'll look into whose responsibility is officially so that you all know.
I appreciate that, thank you.
We have received emails, uh they've come my way. Um we re- redirected those to staff accordingly and and they're being handled. Um so w- w- we know about it. Staff is on top of it. Um Councilmember Brown, do you have any questions, comments? Um miscellaneous discussion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. No, I don't at this time.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that. Um I only have one comment. Um in regards to the downtown, it's kudos really, it's an email and I think, Richa, you may have seen that. Um City Manager Lincoln, you may have seen that, it's kudos to downtown area. Uh specifically to the farmer's market, looking better, uh more opportunities, more options for vendors. Um the only question though, um is the parking issue. Um so I'm sure we'll address that uh also accordingly, but again, just a heads up that. Um everything that is going on at at the uh farmer's market, Peanuts Park. Is looking good and the community is seeing that and liking it. Um I will be here next Monday. Um and with that, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Um it is eight thirty-one and this meeting is officially adjourned. Thank you.